Just a heads up for everybody, we are now on the record and Cassandra Saxon is on. Good evening, everyone. I would like to open up the May 6th Planning Commission meeting at 6:34pm. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll go to our roll call. Commissioner DuBois.
President.
Commissioner Freiberger.
President.
Commissioner Jasper.
Present.
Commissioner Saxon, I believe you are online, Cassandra?
Present, online.
Okay, Commissioner Huggins.
Here.
Commissioner Fatisi, present. Commissioner Fernet, absent. Okay, so let's get going. So has everyone looked at the consent agenda? That's what I'm looking at. I know we don't. So I figure you're gonna put those meeting minutes together for the meeting on the 20th. This is more like a special kind of section. Okay, at this time, we will open up the general public comments section at 6:35pm. Please keep comments to three minutes or less because state law prohibits the use of city facilities for the purpose of supporting or opposing a campaign or ballot proposition. We respectfully request the public comment not make a reference to such matters. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? I'll take that as a no. Is there anyone online that would like to speak? We'll take that as no. Has anyone submitted anything in a written request?
Staff have not received any written comments.
Okay, so with all that, going once, twice sold, we will close the public comments section at 6:36pm and move forward to unfinished business. So take it away either Tom or Nicole. And we have our consultants that are gonna give us some details on that as well.
We do. Thank you very much. Tom Glover, Community Development Director for the city. So this evening, we're getting to see a couple draft sections for our comp plan. So tonight, we've invited our consultants from Facet here to present the, in chapter one, for the comp plan, the introduction, which includes also the vision statement. And then we'll talk about follow-up from the presentation to the housing, or excuse me, the land use element to city council. And take your comments on that too, or discussion. And then they'll present the chapter, I think it's chapter three, for the housing element. So with that, take it away.
My name is Donna Keeler. Thank you for having me here today.
Sorry to interrupt. Can you turn on that wireless mic? I think. Jessica, I think you need Kevin Ewers on as well. There you go.
Is that better?
I didn't see a blue light.
Thanks. Woody, if you could put on the PowerPoint, that would be great. Thank you for having me. I'm Donna Keeler. I'm with Facet. Here to present or discuss with you the first, three elements of the comprehensive plan. Starting with our discussion items tonight, as Tom mentioned, I wanted to go over, if you, Woody, if you can go into the next one, please? Kind of strange at this angle. Okay.
So Donna, this PowerPoint is not in any of the materials that were part of this distribution? Okay.
Yes, that's correct. And so I just wanted to quickly go over how, a discussion about the plan format. And then followed by a discussion on the vision and introduction element, the draft revisions, your first reading. And then from there, we'll jump to the land use element, draft revisions, and then finally end it with a housing element revisions. And then go into questions and discussion after that. Next, Woody? So I just want to highlight what we're looking at in terms of plan format. On the one side, I guess it would be my right, is the existing cover. And we're experimenting now with another alternative cover there that you see right above me with just some more visuals and graphics to try to make it a little more interesting. Next? We are also gonna be incorporating early on, a page as a plan at a glance page with a quick summary, one page, I mean, one paragraph summary of each element. And we're also going to, we're considering having each chapter its own separate color. So kind of giving some color theme to it. Next? Okay. And also, each element, the format, the current format has, there are two columns. And there are not a lot of graphics in there, so we're gonna be moving it over and changing it to a single column, a wider column, with graphics on the right-hand side. There'll be maps, charts, pictures, number of different things. And then, next, Woody? And then from there, moving on to your new overarching vision statement that you reviewed before, that we worked on, will be very close to the beginning of the document. And followed by an acknowledgement page. And we're still working on that acknowledgement page. Most plans have them. And we're gonna be including a tribal acknowledgement. And then Woody, if you can jump to the next one, please? So in your packet, there was a memo from us, kind of highlighting some of the changes in chapter one. And like I mentioned before, we had, we added a plan of a glance, at a glance page. And then the acknowledgement section, we updated the population data and removed and replaced some of the outdated information. Some of it was from the, like, 2000s and 2005. And then we moved the specific vision statements, you recall that you have in the existing plan. We're gonna move those over to each element. So we're not getting rid of them. We might need to update a couple of them, but we'll put them at the beginning of each element. So that kind of highlights some of the changes to the introduction. And before I move on to the land use element, I wanted to see if you had any questions or concerns? I think you wanted to discuss anything that we were taking out that you want to put back in?
So you talk about a future land use map. And I went through this document and exactly what would be, we'd be putting in a future land use map outside of what's in code right now?
So it would be pretty similar to what there is now.
Okay.
And the only change that we're discussing doing right now, because we had our discussion about housing and population growth and whether any reed zones would be needed to accommodate that. Matt's done some number crunching. He's gonna talk some more about it. But at this point, we're just, the only change that we're considering is changing the zone, the overlay, the business district overlay to, oh my gosh, I'm blanking on the name of it.
Transitional mixed commercial overlay.
Transitional mixed commercial overlay to an actual zone. And so that would be one prominent change that you would see in the future land use map.
So that would be like the Skagit Steel, the old Skagit Steel plant there where there's the overlay over the industrial and you're gonna create a new zone possibly?
Yes, that's what's being proposed. And then adding a little more flexibility in that zone to allow for more housing and small-scale manufacturing, low-impact manufacturing in that zone as well.
I see. Okay.
Donna?
So the proposed changes to the residential zoning to low, medium, and high density, that would more affect the zoning map rather than the comprehensive plan map as far as, because different designations, correct?
Yes, yes, you're correct. And so what we start, we start out with a kind of a policy, providing direction to change that. And then, then the changes would be interpreted in the code, yeah, in the zoning map, yeah. There are any other questions or I can jump into the feature, I mean, land use element? I'm going to move this back a little bit, if that's okay, so I can look at the screen, because my paper is so tiny that it didn't print out right.
So one more question, I guess, before you move on to the next thing. So like, this is, what we're looking at right now, this is an example of kind of roughly how the graphics will look and everything for.
Yes. Woody, if you can go back to like two or three before this one, like, yeah, so right here is good. So, yeah, this would be an example of what a page, like the beginning of a chapter would look like.
Okay, yeah.
Woody, if you can move on forward, I think three, right here, yeah, perfect. And so in the memo that we sent you, we highlighted also provide kind of a summary of some of the changes in the land use element. So like I mentioned earlier, with exception to the TMCO overlay, we are not, at this point, recommending any changes to the zoning or future land use map, which is something the council was hoping. What we're, and Matt will go into it more detail, but we're trying to find other creative ways to accommodate the different housing levels that are required by the city to meet the Growth Management Act requirements. We also added a new policy to develop a downtown activation plan to try to figure out ways to encourage more business. But also, we further, I mean, it's a very nice downtown right now, but we've heard over and over from the council and during meetings that more jobs need to be created, more housing is needed, and more options for businesses. So this downtown activation plan will hopefully help the city get to that. And also with that, we also heard at public meetings, the public meeting we had a couple weeks ago on the climate element and vehicle miles traveled, there were a lot of concerns about, from folks about being asked to reduce mileage. And we heard also that if there were more jobs here, there would be fewer people having to drive outside. And so that, this activation, this plan would also help with that part of, you know, with creating more jobs here to reduce VMT. We also, you remember the earlier version of the land use element? We, and it was policy numbers, land use 6.2, we replaced single-family with residential. That did not go over very well. Danielle was there. So we, we put it back in. And I think that, I think our intent was not to get rid of single-family homes at all, but I think it was perceived that way. And so we put it back in. I think we will still be able to meet the housing goals with that language. And we already talked about the land use designations will be changed, and this is a discussion we had last time. So we're just changing the nomenclature to low, medium, high density versus R15, R5, R7, R6. I think it'll make it a lot easier for staff and for the public to understand.
Actually, let me comment on that. That's not true. And I'll take issue with that. In not just this jurisdiction, pretty much every jurisdiction that I practice in, it designates the density you can put in a residential zone, saying high, medium, low, is pretty subjective. Because I'll tell you right now, what somebody thinks is low in one place doesn't necessarily mean low someplace else. So those numbers absolutely meant something. So before we start dumbing it down like that, having an actual number of what you can put on an acre, that is important for a whole lot of reasons. So personally, I'm not in favor of that, but anybody else can have their own thoughts on that. But there's a reason why you have a number.
Yeah, and I agree. I think what's happened, and Nicole can probably elaborate a little further, is that with the allowance now of ADUs and density bonuses, like for planned residential development projects, that number is, now is movable, right? And so I think that's been, the part that's been confusing for the public when they come and ask, you know, what does this mean? But then there's an exception to it. So, but there might be another way where we can work with that. Because I, I understand your point too, is that it does provide those bookends in your mind, right? Like, you know, that's a maximum density.
No, it's, it's a little bit more than that. For instance, a PRD, okay? An individual that owns a building lot, if they have three acres, that's not in their wheelhouse. A PRD is a totally, totally different animal. And it's the development community that actually understands that code, that you can PRD any of these zones, except I believe in R1. So you're gonna be looking at a different density mix, depending on what type of project you want to do. And I gave Matt an example of a good one that had a lot of different options in it. So I'm not gonna belabor this, but those numbers are definitely important. And I do believe that everybody is fully aware of ADUs, detached ADUs, and the whole concept of additional housing on smaller lots even. So we have some examples. However, the underlying zone, just go in high, medium, low, really doesn't explain anything. And I think it'd even be more confusing for someone going forward. Let's just keep that to the side for now. I'm not gonna, like I said, belabor it anymore.
I'd like to make a quick point of clarification. So in reviewing our planned residential development code, we are still using the R5, R7, R15 caps. The density allowance that PRDs allow is the variety in the housing types that you can get on the various lot sizes. So really, the value to a PRD is properties that maybe have site constraints. You can kind of puzzle piece lots a little bit better together. In addition to, you know, typically in the R5, you're limited at single-family housing. But then if you do the PRD, you've got your various lot sizes, you still have the cap of R5, five units per acre. But you're able to get duplexes, townhomes, condos, single families, plus your ADUs.
I am crystal clear on that, because it took us two years to do that code. So, yeah. And that was the whole power of the PRD, was to get that middle housing components in there. You can get, you know, lots as small as 2,500 square feet in there. And that was the point that I was bringing up, to accommodate the density. We had a much higher number back in 2016 of what we thought we were shooting at as far as the amount of residents we were going to need to provide. So the PRD was a really big piece that allowed us, with some of these larger lots, okay? To allow that density to come in, to incorporate pretty much every single type of housing style that we have. And I would say, one thing we should look at in the PRD is to incorporate cottage housing that's currently not in there. So to truly give that PRD the true flexibility of every single housing type that we currently provide, which is pretty much, I can't think of anything else outside of yurts and tents, right? I mean, seriously. So we have, we have options on that PRD with the bigger lots to put that mix in. So anyway, that's, that's a discussion for a different day, but the land use and how we accommodate that growth is important to a whole lot of people.
Something else to consider too, is I could see an argument for removing that density cap too. We did have a pre-application meeting for planned residential development. The site plan was very appealing, different lot sizes. They wanted to do duplexes on zero lot line and single-family, all with different size lots. A little bit of site constraint here is kind of a skinnier lot, so they had to be careful with their, you know, required street width. So the size of the lots really mattered. And what they found, they, they didn't realize that they were still capped at their R5 max. And so in looking at their project feasibility under that cap, having to redesign their number of units that they were able to financially feasibly get was about halved. So it, it, there is certain market considerations too, that I think are useful to look at. And we also have a number of other sorts of mechanisms that help to still get the form that we're looking for. We have minimum lot size, the setback regulations, building height, all of that stuff still makes sure that we, we don't get too small of lots, right? So it won't get that packed in like sardines feel.
You know, I've seen other projects, they go vertical. I actually had a discussion with one of the heads at the Chicago Tally. We were talking about ADUs, you know, in particular. And he sent over some code from Everett in particular. We were just talking about a thinner lot and going higher. And it just, certain types of people, like, you know, if you're retired and your knees are going like mine are slowly going, I'm not looking to go up three stories. However, for a lot of people, yeah, that, that's not a problem whatsoever. So, yeah, there's latitude there. Anyway, continue, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, I think this is a really good discussion. It's just trying to find ways to accommodate good design that fits within the city and provide that flexibility while still providing some, a framework or bookends, so. And see, the last one, like I mentioned before, the, creating the new transitional mixed commercial zone, where it currently is an overlay. And so before we move on to housing, well, we've already started the discussion, but are there any more questions? Or anything else you wanted to discuss?
Is it, sorry, is it still possible, going back to the last one, sorry? Is it still possible that we can hammer that out, whether it's the fuzzier language or whether we just come up with a better system for the numbering system that's more, more relevant now that, that there's variation? You know, like I could see an R5 and then in the same parenthesis, or in parentheses behind it, ADU add two or something so that people know what, what the density is. I mean, you can do the math pretty quick, right? If there's five units and you're gonna put, it can be a maximum of two ADUs in each one, then you know that you can add up in your head pretty quickly how many units might be there eventually in the area. So there are ways that we can make it a number more accurate. Will there be a chance to do that, I guess, is what I'm?
Yeah, I think my thought was that we will, we will work with staff on that piece and then come back to you before we take it forward to council. Will that work?
No, but I see another code that accommodates things like that. So let's say you'll have, let's say, R5, okay? You have the different permitted uses, uses of what you can put in there. And then you'll have subcategories of different things. And that's where you go number one, two, three, four. And then you have to start reading down through the fine print. And then that's where, that's typically accommodated and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to hash it out here, but I just was, wanted to know if there's the opportunity to, to propose or present ideas that, that could keep us in the numbering system, because I agree, it, it's nice to know in a glance what's going on and not have to read the entire document to figure out.
I believe at the end of the day, it's our call. I mean, this is all good stuff, but we're the ones that are gonna come up with that decision, so.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, going back to what Nicole mentioned about seeing a plan that came in front of her is that there's a way where you, that you might have some outright permitted uses. And then projects like that would be maybe conditional use permits that would have to go through public review and design review. I mean, that's another way of handling that kind of.
We did have a pre-application meeting for Planned Residential Development. The site plan was very appealing, different lot sizes. They wanted to do duplexes on zero lot line and single-family, all with different sized lots. A little bit of site constraint here is kind of a skinnier lot, so they had to be careful with their, you know, required street width. So the size of the lots really mattered. And what they found, they didn't realize that they were still capped at their R5 max. And so in looking at their project feasibility under that cap, having to redesign their number of units that they were able to financially feasibly get was about halved. So it, there is certain market considerations too, that I think are useful to look at. And we also have a number of other sorts of mechanisms that help to still get the form that we're looking for. We have minimum lot size, the setback regulations, building height, all of that stuff. Still makes sure that we don't get too small of lots, right? So it won't get that packed in like sardines feel.
You know, I've seen other projects, they go vertical. I actually had a discussion with one of the heads at the Chicago Teller. We were talking about ADUs, you know, in particular. And he sent over some code from Everett in particular. And we were just talking about a thinner lot and going higher. And it just, certain types of people, like, you know, if you're retired and your knees are going like mine are slowly going, I'm not looking to go up three stories. However, for a lot of people, yeah, that's not a problem whatsoever. So, yeah, there's latitude there. Anyway, continue, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, I think this is a really good discussion. It's just trying to find ways to accommodate good design that fits within the city and provide that flexibility while still providing some, a framework or bookends, so. And see, the last one, like I mentioned before, the, creating the new transitional mixed commercial zone, where it currently is an overlay. And so before we move on to housing, well, we've already started the discussion, but are there any more questions or anything else you wanted to discuss?
Is it, sorry, is it still possible, going back to the last one, sorry, is it still possible that we can hammer that out? Whether it's the fuzzier language or whether we just come up with a better system for the numbering system that's more, more relevant now that there's variation, you know? Like I could see an R5 and then in the same parenthesis, or in parentheses behind it, ADU add to or something, so that people know what, what the density is. I mean, you can do the math pretty quick, right? If there's five units and you're going to put, it can be a maximum of two ADUs in each one, then you know that you can add up in your head pretty quickly how many units might be there eventually in the area. So there are ways that we can make it a number more accurate. Will there be a chance to do that, I guess is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I think my thought was that we will, we will work with staff on that piece and then come back to you before we take it forward to council. Will that work?
No, but I see another code that accommodates things like that. So let's say you'll have, let's say, R5, okay? You have the different permitted uses, uses of what you can put in there. And then you'll have subcategories of different things. And that's where you go number one, two, three, four, and then you have to start reading down through the fine print. And that's where, that's typically accommodated and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to hash out here, but I just was, wanted to know if there's the opportunity to propose or present ideas that could keep us in the numbering system. Because I agree, it's nice to know in a glance what's going on and not have to read the entire document to figure out.
I believe at the end of the day, it's our call. I mean, this is all good stuff, but we're the ones that are going to come up with that decision, so.
Yeah, you know, going back to what Nicole mentioned about seeing a plan that came in front of her, is that there's a way where you, that you might have some outright permitted uses. And then projects like that would be maybe conditional use permits that would have to go through public review and design review. I mean, that's another way of handling that kind of where, where it would at least have a chance to be reviewed.
Yeah, and that process is in place, and it's been in place for a long time, so.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to turn it over to Matt now, so he can talk about housing.
Are we going to?
Thank you.
Matt, are we going to go? Are we going to go to a different handout here? Or am I at a different spot on the agenda? Or we're still on the same one?
This will be a new agenda item.
Okay, so we're going to go to cover memo from Facet regarding draft comprehensive plan elements? Like, moving on to new business, I just need to get that on the record.
Yeah, I mean, we've kind of already started the cover memo discussion, but.
Okay, but we're done with the unfinished business, which is the draft intervention. By the way, I do like the graphics on the side and that one. Because you're right, it was pretty dry, our last one. And then when you actually throw some pictures in it, you can actually get a better feel for what we're trying to accommodate. Yeah, that's a good job, thank you. So unfinished business, we will now move on to new business, okay? And that will be the cover memo from Facet regarding draft comprehensive plan elements and housing element. Take it away, Matt.
Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate you being here for a special meeting. So the cover memo contains a summary of the changes for all of the elements that we're kind of talking about tonight. So if you consider the unfinished business finished for tonight, then we can, I guess, skip to the housing element portion of that cover memo. Because the introduction and the land use element have been covered. Kind of, those are kind of the bullet points that were covered in the slides that Donna did. Apologize for my allergy voice. I was sick last time I was here. I was not sick, but I was sick when I was here last time, and I also had a terrible voice, so I apologize.
It's us, isn't it?
So basically, we're saying that the cover was included in the last presentation, looking at it?
Yes.
It was, okay.
Yep.
No problem. It's all good. So let's get to the draft housing elements. We can just jump to that right on, okay?
Woody, can you go to the housing element slide, please? Thank you. So there's a lot of red in this draft. And a lot of it is, is in the kind of inventory section. I think that what we'll actually end up doing, just so you're all aware, once we, once we get like the, the style, kind of the, the format of the new version and can do a kind of a accept all changes version, is I know that we have to maintain, you know, document integrity. So what we'll probably end up doing is just do a strike through of the whole existing housing elements inventory section. Because there's just, you know, it's a lot of red ink because it's mostly updating data, inserting new data sources where appropriate, deleting stuff that's been replaced by other, you know, required elements of the housing analysis. So I would urge you to not look, not, we don't need to get into the weeds too much, hopefully, on that inventory and analysis section, because most of that comes from the housing needs assessment and the land capacity analysis. And that section will have a whole new look, once the, once we're able to get a new version. And I'm hoping we can focus on the goals and policies, because that's really where the rubber meets the road, as far as, you know, how this gets implemented. There are, I did do some edits to kind of the, the language of the element expressing, kind of the, you know, there's the whole section on the housing element that obviously had to be heavily revised because of changes to the housing element, you know, in requirements in the Growth Management Act. I also, I know that there's, you know, parallel to this. There was the cottage housing ordinance that was recently passed. And so we had to kind of reflect some of that in here too. But really, the policies that are, I added some new draft policies, taking into account the feedback that we've received from you all and from city council on the housing options that Cederwully wants to pursue. You know, specifically this idea of a, of the density bonus in the PRD being able to be available to projects where, where there's an affordability component. So it wouldn't change the unit types, but it would require covenants on property for a specific length of time that would keep certain units affordable at a certain AMI range for that length of time. That would be kind of the implementing mechanism of it. So I added some policies to, policy language to kind of support that, as well as some policies on mitigating displacement risk. You know, that's another piece of the GMA requirements for the housing element now. So specific to exploring ways to protect existing manufactured home parks, as well as any that may be annexed into the city in the future. That's an important source of naturally occurring affordable housing. And the data on displacement risk for a city as small as Cederwully is actually not that great. But one of the things that we were able to really tease out was that the main source of displacement risk in the city is mobile home parks. And so I added a couple policies, some policy language on that. And then more, more, just kind of the general format and organization of the chapter. You know, you have, you have goals and policies, and then there's an actions section at the end in your current housing element. And I think that's a really interesting approach that, that we may end up pursuing for the other elements as well, especially once, once we kind of get preliminary buy-off on the goals and policies for them, for the other elements, to kind of do this for the other elements as well. But really, that's an opportunity to, you'd have a goal, which is kind of a, this is the, this is the, kind of the overarching objective of this category of ideas, you know? That we want to be a place that is, that is welcoming, you know, something kind of general. And then the policies are more specific, they're actionable. You know, you say, you know, prohibit this, or encourage that, or work with other partners to do this specific, you know, sort of idea, this specific policy idea. The actions are even more specific. And that's where you would get into, you know, is this something that, that the, has enough information in it to where, you know, you all and, and Tom and the mayor and the city council can, can develop a work program, an annual work program? So you know, like, you know, oh, we're going to do this this year, and it's really, it's more specific. So there were actually some areas where I took some policies out that were duplicative. And I also, there were a couple places where, took a policy and moved it to an action because the policy, existing policy was very specific and kind of implemented one of the other existing policies, or one of the new proposed policies. So even though there's a lot of red ink in here, I think, you know, that's kind of, there's, when you get down to the way the element is organized and some of the draft changes that I made, there's kind of those categories, right? There's the changes to support, you know, potential development regulations, changes to meet your housing allocations. There's changes to, like, new policies to address displacement risk. And then there's just organizational work, you know? So moving things from policies to, to actions. And then in some cases, just there were some duplicative policies, and so how can we kind of streamline this? Those are kind of the main categories of changes that are in the, in this first draft. So would love your feedback on the changes. I know, again, I know it's a lot of red ink. But it's, I think, when you actually drill down and look at these different categories of changes, and all of my comments in there kind of detail the reason for the change, we think that we can kind of group them into those kind of big buckets for purposes of discussion.
Now, there's a lot here to go through. So you just went through a couple of actually big ones? Do you want to go back through those and highlight the past couple that you just mentioned?
Yes.
Because I see what you did, now I'm finally getting my head around this. You did a lot of work, by the way.
Thanks, hope it's, hope it's helpful. I will also note that for the actions, I think what would be helpful in the final version, and then we're going to wait until we've, you know, gotten more buy-off on the policies, is that we'll actually associate actions with, with a policy, right? So each action will implement one or more policies. And then there's a way of kind of, you can do a table or something, or just in a parenthetical citation to kind of crosswalk what, which of the policies you're actually implementing with this action. So that has not been done yet, because, you know, it's kind of put in the cart before the horse. But that is kind of the intent there, is to, there's a lot of good ideas in there, and how can we kind of organize it better?
Now, looking at your, it's exactly what we said, to have standard building plans for the cottage housing. And I believe you covered this in H5 dot four, established standards for factory-built homes within the single-family land use areas?
Are you talking about the pre-approved plans? Is that what you're thinking about? Because I know I had a policy there or an action about ADUs, but I don't know if I had it in there for cottage housing. So if Nicole can, can chime in here, if there is a pre-approved plans component of the cottage housing, I kind of feel like I remember hearing that, but we can certainly add that if that's an element of that as well.
This is just general, establish standards for factory-built homes within single-family land use areas?
That's manufactured homes. So that's, that's one of those, good to keep on the books, even though I think you already have the standards. Just because it, it's, that's a requirement of GMA that, you know, that, as long as your factory-built homes meet your standards, that they sort of count for the purposes of density as a single-family home.
There's so many different designs these days. You wouldn't even know it. If you, the Coach Corral is an example. They have some product there that you would just think they were standard ranches. You wouldn't even know they're manufactured homes.
Yeah, just to clarify that, yeah. We did talk about pre-approved plans for ADUs. The conversation does open up to cottage housing. And I've even heard jurisdictions doing that for single-family housing development too. So it's, it's something we can look into. I'd rather start small and see how it goes.
Right.
But, yeah, definitely something worth looking into.
Well, from your perspective though, if you have pre-approved plans, and I've just seen people change the garage from one side to the other, put an awning over a porch or whatever it is. So even if it's the exact same floor plan, there's just minor articulations that happen. So to have a catalog of that kind of cuts down on your time as well as their time.
Absolutely. It completely, you know, the building inspector will take a look at the plans, vet it one time. And then he doesn't have to look at any of the subsequent ones that are applied for with that plan set.
That's West Scott version B.
So building department is completely out of the picture at that point. So all I would look at is, you know, the site plan, does it meet setbacks, lot coverage, those sorts of things? But that's a quick review. I don't have to look at design review, I don't have to look at building height, I don't, yeah. It's, it definitely cuts down on review time. I could get that in, you know, application in and out in the same day.
What are your thoughts on this, Commissioner Freiberger? Because you deal with that on a daily basis in the city of Mount Verde, so I was going to get to you. So if anybody is at the front line.
Well, actually, Nicole, I wanted to ask you, have we done registered basics for any of the big developments in the city? Because that's basically what this, kind of a, just taking this to the next level of having something on file that people could kind of pick from, right?
Not officially.
Officially?
Brickyard Park, done by BYK, kind of comes to mind as one that we sort of did. Not officially, right? But there were several housing plans, the floor plans were all very similar. And so, you know, they'd put the little, like their, what'd they call it? The plan set number, right? And they're like, you reviewed this on this day and approved it. And so that way, we could take that. And we had a little list, like, oh, we looked at this, we already approved it. So building would just pass it on to me. So kind of, and it worked out okay. There were, there were other times where, you know, they want to do that, where they, you know, like, oh, we're going to put the garage on the other side and things like that. But ultimately, like, building wasn't really needed at that point. So it has worked okay.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a great idea, of course, anything that speeds up the process, but.
Cuts the cost down too.
I'll also mention too, I think there's a way you can put in the code that there are audits on a regular basis. I think, you know, the architect, you know, they have to certify that they are okay to do the work that they're doing, and everything is according to current building code, residential code, that sort of thing. And then everyone, I don't know how often, you know, every three months or something like that, you'd audit, look at a few plans and check that they do in fact conform to the building code. And then there are mechanisms in there that if they don't, then that specific architect would be mixed.
Who would perform the audit? You guys?
I don't know who that would be, probably us, I don't know.
Are you staffed for it? I know we're really tight right now.
It would have to be someone that knows the building code, so it's not going to be me.
It would be our building official or building inspector.
Just want to make sure we don't get over our skis where we're putting things basically in law that says you need to do this, and we don't have the staff or the ability to do it. Because I know Auburn in particular just rezoned the entire city, and they are in a panic right now of how they're even going to handle what they're required to even do. So putting things in, saying that this is a requirement, that we're not equipped, you know, staff-wise to handle it, that's.
I think we're fine.
You have an inspector on retainers.
I was just going to say that, so essentially we'd have, we have to.
I'm just throwing it out there, I mean, that's out of my, that's out of my lane, but I know the traffic going on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You'll see a few places in here, the where feasible clause inserted, that does a lot of work on that subject.
Where feasible.
Yeah.
And I think that's the key, is just opening up. Sometimes you can unintentionally limit yourself. I mean, sometimes that is the point too. But obviously, with the mandates for providing all of this more affordable housing, we have to relook at this and open up the possibility. I think people are afraid that suddenly anything goes kind of thing. But that's not the purpose here, it's just to make the possibility of even getting close to satisfying some of these. When I was reading through the, the data further up, you know, of the, just the lack of affordability that's just skyrocketed in the last few years, it's really probably very distressing for large, what was it, for rentals? It was like, what, did I see something that said 74% or something? It had gone, it was like a crazy number that had gone up so much, maybe I.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, it was like the 20, I forget what the interval was in the years, but yeah, it was like 74% growth in rent and like 30% growth in income, or something like that.
In like five years or something, it was, it was just like, yeah.
Uh, not in this presentation, although we have slides at the end from the previous presentation on the, on the growth targets and stuff. But I don't think we have like an HNA slide in particular. But yeah, so certainly it's a, and, you know, the city's, the city's ability to, to influence that is obviously limited. So all you can really do is have the zoning that supports, that supports this work. I did, while you all are looking through my lots and lots of comments, I did want to return real quickly to the, the conversation that we're, that Donna and we were having about the density bonuses for the PRD. You know, my understanding is that currently in code, it's, the density bonus is basically just to get you from where you're at with the net acreage, the critical areas deductions and all that stuff, up to the maximum, is that correct, Nicole? So the maximum of five acres would still be in place for a PRD in?
It's three acres.
I mean, five dwelling units per acre, I'm sorry.
That's correct.
So, you know, I think it would, it might be worth, you know, with, with your example as well, Nicole, it may be worth considering, and I don't know what the appetite on the planning commission is to look at, like, an actual density incentive, maybe wouldn't have, right now, there's like two, right? There's like up to 10 acres, you get two units. And then beyond that, you get an additional two units per 10 acres or something? It's a little bit convoluted, but, you know, I think, I think it would be worth having the conversation of like, for an affordability incentive, you could just have it be a max of, you know, an additional two dwelling units an acre with no increase, the larger you go on a project. But, you know, certainly when you're talking about your kind of providing the under 80% AMI housing, you have a huge, you have a surplus of middle housing capacity because of your PRD. And if you had a dense, a true density bonus, where you could go from five to seven or seven to nine, for example, that, that may actually, you know, I think that would probably do the most good of any of the tools that we talked about at the previous meeting toward meeting that goal. And so it sounds like maybe there's at least one applicant who would be happy about that. And I think, you know, it'd be. And I think, you know, it'd be worth certainly having the conversation if, if there's support for it.
It, it just has to be done carefully. When we, when we created the PRD, and I don't remember if it was 2005 or whatever, we tried going with the, a density thing, with a bonus thing. And we got into this pickle with the developers where we would say, well, if, they'd say we want to add this many units. And then we would say, well, then we have to have this much more open space. And they'd say, well, then we're just going to make our lots smaller, because we had no minimum. And so finally they, the city council put the 4,600 square foot minimum lot size thing in there, saying just, there's nothing going to be smaller than 4,600 square feet because of that experience. And then our PRD went to the shelf for about 10 years.
And then it came back alive in 2016 for, took us two years.
So it has to, I, I'm not against it, but you got to figure out a mechanism that doesn't allow the developer to just keep decreasing their, their lot sizes and stuff, so they can keep cramming stuff in.
You always look at codes sometimes like UVMU, and I've brought this up a lot of times. The kind of version 1.0s. And you don't know until you start getting projects that are deployed and you see, and I've said this a hundred times, did you create the Bride of Frankenstein or did you create something that really accomplished the goals of what you set out to do in the first place? So now that I look at some of our projects in UVMU, I'm a happy guy. I think we got that right. And I look at a lot of our PRDs and I think we got that right as well. And that's where our flexibility is, because that's where our larger lots are at. The reason we only went down to three acres, it was a very specific instance here where there was an assisted care facility fairly close by to town hall, and we brought it down to three. Originally we were looking at five or higher. So again, that's why a lot of times you need to see these things built before you can really understand, you know, where the modifications can be. But yeah, the PRD was a real, real powerful tool in order to incorporate a lot of different growth with a lot of different housing variety and strategies as far as deployment. And now we're looking at everything from park models to cottage housing and things like that. So I could easily see, especially on the bigger properties, and I know we have some well over 20 acres that I know will be coming through the door at some point in the future, that you can incorporate these different strategies within these properties of that size. So that's definitely on the table, I would, I would think.
So Matt, are you saying that right now the housing element is the only one that actually has the action items that you've seen so far?
I mean, I've only looked at, you know, because I, I think we're, you know, we're scoped to do like five of the elements and I haven't looked at the other ones specifically. But, I mean, I've looked at like land use and capital facilities and parks, and I don't think they, those have it. So as far as I know, it's the only one that does, which is an interesting, I, you know, kind of curious about the history on that as, as to why it does and the other ones don't. Maybe some of the ones you don't, you don't necessarily need it, because like for, you know, for, for parks, I know, I know there's some, there's interest in pursuing like a, like a parks master plan, which would obviously be much more specific than the parks and recreation and open space element. So maybe your action would just be like, you know, develop a parks master plan for that one. So you may not need like a whole list of actions. But when it comes to the ones where there's potential real like code changes or like, you know, grant programs or something, or partnerships, specific things that you think the city should do, it can help to get more specific, so that it's, it's implementable through like a work program.
So are you talking about the elements in particular? Because we, we have a parks and recreation element.
Yeah, we're talking about which, if any of the other elements have the, what the housing element does, which is the, the act, you know, I think it's called objectives in your, in your current element. But the, their actions, they're like specific steps to implement the policies.
You know, you know what it really comes down to? Housing is probably the most, out of all of it, it's the most complex. Because we have, like I said, I want the secret to get out of how many great parks we actually have in this town. Because I, I think we have more square footage per resident of park than anybody I've ever seen. So, so I think that's why we've paid more, more attention, probably to that and capital facilities, especially transportation. All those three integrate amongst each other, very much so.
Yeah, and as far as, you know, specific actions, you know, like I said, a parks master plan would really be the implementing mechanism for the parks element, and the capital facilities plan is kind of the implementing mechanism for the capital facilities element. You just have to have goals and policies, because the state says you have to have goals and policies. And then the, the separate document that's incorporated as an appendix is what implements the plan. For housing, yeah, I think probably because it's, you know, other than maybe like environment, which, you know, is, has like the critical areas ordinance, which is kind of a whole separate thing. I, I think housing is probably the most tightly linked to your development regulations of all the elements. And that's why it might make sense to have it there and not in others.
In the housing though, we're, we're, we're serving different masters as well. Number one Olympia, right? So we get a whole lot of things thrown our way that really don't apply as, as much as it would to say like the city of Seattle or Kirkland or someplace down south. I mean, the folks in Vader, Washington, I'm, I'm sure they are looking at certain things saying like, excuse me?
Yeah, Vader may actually, may actually be small enough to meet that threshold where you, where you can opt out. I'm not sure, but you know, there's, there's that new provision added last year where like super small cities can actually opt out of updating their plans. They may actually be one of them. Cedar Valley is obviously not, but, yeah. You know, I think the legislature has kind of chipped away at some, given some outs for super small communities. Like, you know, the, there's the, the, don't need to adopt if you're super small and haven't grown. And then there's the like, uh, small cities can adopt the county's critical areas ordinance and stuff like that. But, you know, those are, the number of affected communities there are obviously pretty small, so anyway.
Quickly on the action items, I love that idea as a staff member.
I, I like it too.
I like, even if it's only one action item, the thing is with these comp plan elements where you've got all these goals and policies, if you have action items sprinkled in there, you know, it's hard for me to look back at those and say, okay, what do I need to work on when I have free time, right? If I can just go down to the action items list and start checking things off, then we get some actual work done.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the ones that get done, transportation gets done because there's a five-year transportation plan.
Right.
You know, the, the sewer system gets done because they've got a plan that they work by. Parks doesn't have a plan. You know, we did a bicycle path thing when I started in 2001. We did a survey and we drew up a plan, and it gets kind of done haphazardly as we, you know, improve streets and stuff. But the original plan never gets touched, because there's no action plan for how to implement a bicycle route in Cedar Valley. So I think it's a great idea, having action plans for all of the elements that we can.
How would you put some teeth behind that though? Like for instance, and that's the whole thing about a comp plan, you have a goal and they got a policy to get there. Doesn't necessarily say the bus is actually going to show up where it's going at some point in the future.
Well, I think, I think Matt mentioned it earlier that, you know, we'd put an annual work plan together and I didn't, you know, together with, with our administrator, and we'd start assigning tasks by quarter for the year.
We did that, Tom, when, when, when I had worked with you before at your, at your previous job, I think we did that for the housing action plan where we did like a, you know, this is something you can do next year. This is something you should probably do within the next five years. This is something after your comp plan update. So it's, you know, it's not super specific, because there's an art to it, right? Like you may all get together to develop a work plan and there's, you have other things on your list besides, besides the comp plan. And so there's, there's a, there's just, you know, human nature and other considerations as well. But like, if you have a, some sort of, you know, like, I mean, there's some code changes that have to get done within six months of plan adoption, because the state says they have to get done within six months. So that's an obvious, you know, those, that obviously needs to be on the, on the work plan, you know, for early next year, for example. But you could, you could do a similar kind of thing where you say like, this is a, this is a, you know, like a kind of a one-year thing. We think we can get this done in one year. These ones we think we can get done kind of in the medium term. These ones get done maybe after the five-year check-in, or there's a lot of other things that start creeping in once you get that far out. But there is some structure that you can put to it. It's not, it's not just a long list of things, some of which are complicated and some of which are easier. And, and you just kind of have to pick and choose, that you can actually put some, some thought into organizing them.
You know, a lot of this stuff is market-driven though too. You know, the developers need to come on in and look at what the, the, the structure is here, what's allowable, and, and want to make that investment in the city to provide those types of housing. So on our next meeting on the 20th, this is great by the way.
Thank you.
So I, I just haven't got, I just found out at 4:30 I was pressure washing senior citizens shop. But anyway, but this is a really good structure. So on the 20th, are we going to go back to this? Because housing is, is, out of all of this, I want to say it probably is the most complicated out of it. And that's why I'm glad this is, that, that's why I was saying, the vision is great, but we got to start getting into the weeds here, and housing is definitely the weeds.
So I believe I sent this out to everybody to council too. I've got a schedule here that we put together. What I was trying to do is everything that gets reviewed by planning commission then goes to city council as soon as possible. And then sometimes we'll come back to planning commission for additional commentary. For example, the land use element, we didn't get a lot of comment or feedback from council. We gave them some extra time, but we also thought it was necessary, since they had seen it, to bring that back to you and let you know at least that part with this.
Do you want to wait off until after the 20th to go through this again? Because housing is huge.
Yeah, no, this is going to, well, wait, so what we're going to do, yes, we're going to come back on the 20th. But we're first going to take it to city council on the 14th.
Are we ready to do it though? Because I don't know.
Yeah, because what we want to do is they're not taking action on this. What they're doing is they're seeing it for the first time, we're getting their initial thought.
And then throwing it back to us.
Bring it back to you guys with their thoughts.
Just want to make sure this isn't a rap.
No, yeah, certainly not.
Yeah, no, we're done. No, 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 no.
Great job.
Yeah, it doesn't work like that, but that's my plan.
Get that on the record, this is not a rap.
But we recognize that housing is a big component, the land use is a big component. Vision statement, as you know, took a few times, that sort of thing. Some of the others may not require a two-touch by planning commission, but this certainly does, and with council too. So that is my grand plan, to bring this back to you on the 20th along with any residual comments from the vision statement introduction following council, this review. And then we'll also be introducing the transportation element at that meeting as well.
Right.
So I got them all lined up here.
Hurricane.
Matt, if I, if I might, I didn't really have a comment at this time on, on the goals and policies. But I did have a question just regarding kind of, well, on page 11 under household income, I just had a question because I saw that you updated the years. But then the median household income didn't look like it had been updated. So I just wanted to confirm whether those numbers were the current ones or if that was just somehow when, you know, things were getting marked up in red and black.
Yeah, that could have just been a Scrivener's error where I, I just glossed over something that was black that should, that was, had not actually been changed.
Because I was going, man, is, are those the real numbers or do those need to be updated as far as?
I think I know the section you're talking about.
It's right at the very bottom of page 11, under the household income header.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'm, I'm sure I just didn't update the, I think your page numbers might be different. Oh, there we go. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, I just, I just missed that. Yep, thank you.
Okay, so before we move on, how about I just go around the room here? I'm going to start from my right to left, and Sandra, I'm going to include you. Cassandra, you still there? Cassandra?
I'm here, just looking for the mute button.
I'm going to go around the room, I'm going to start with Commissioner Huggins on my right, and then Commissioner Jasper, and then I'll jump to you and just throw your comments out. Anything we want to talk about on the next round after council goes to it, just so everybody understands what everybody's thoughts are. So Pat, take it.
Yeah, I, I think, this, this was great. I think we want to do housing first, because that's, that's the land use and that are the big one. And then transportation is next. I think you got them in the right order, so, yeah. And then everything else is much easier. Public facilities, they just bring them to us, the fire department, the schools, everybody just bring them to you and say this is what we're doing, and we make sure it all sounds like it's working. So anyway, yes, I think it, it sounds like you got it all in the right order.
Commissioner Jasper?
So I agree with you about the visual, looking at it. When I first got on planning commission, which wasn't too long ago, I remember being handed this and reading it, and the two narrow columns were very, very difficult to read for me. So I really like all the work you guys are putting into it. I am very curious about all the changes happening in Olympia right now to include, I just looked it up, Bill 5184 about parking and how we're doing so much work into this amazing plan and getting so much input, and then there's some changes that could be coming down the pipeline that.
That one, by the way, did.
It passed senate.
Yeah, but it only applies to cities of 20,000 or more.
I was going to say, it's a population.
We're not going to grow bigger than that, right?
Never, ever.
That's not the plan on this plan.
Yeah, I just, I, I like the idea, I like the verbiage you guys are using, because it does leave some leeway. Again, new to the planning commission when things come from Olympia that sort of constrain us on a plan is something I'm learning about. But I do really like what you guys are doing and how you lay it out. I love the idea of the action statements. Definitely like having goals to work towards specifically, not just, hey, we want to be a good place. So, thank you.
Commissioner Saxon?
Yeah, I mean, for housing and transportation, everything looks good for me. I'm going to be the broken record that talks more about infrastructure for parks. Yes, the city has a lot of parks, but not a lot of usable parks when you consider we have four schools that are trying to field activities, you know, on, for like football and baseball and, and things like that. And we're kind of limited on playfields. And so I'd love to see some more deliberate language for developing that infrastructure. I like the statistics, the, the numbers, the figures, tables, graphs, all those are, are very informational. You know, easy to, easy to consume, which is, which is great. And then, yeah, I think that's it.
You know, we've talked about this before as far as being able to share the different, we, we have amazing facilities, athletic facilities that the school district definitely manages. So that might be a worthy conversation. I mean, I can talk to the A.D., Kevin Owen, and get his ideas on stuff like that as well as, you know, Eric Johnson, he's the president of the school board. So we definitely have some individuals we can run that by, because I'm a big fan of athletics, I mean, bottom line, so.
Yeah, the only, the only issue, it's, it's the school district runs them, but they prioritize the high school. You know, so like Janiki, you know, all of the kids, we have three baseball fields that have the 90-degree angles, you know, with, with the, you know, the right distance for running bases, and, and they're all at Janiki. You know, a lot of the little league teams use the two fields that we have down at, you know, Riverfront Park. But that's five baseball fields for the high school, three middles, three elementary schools and one middle school. So, you know, it's, it's not enough for practices and games. It's, it's a struggle. That's just one sport, right? We have one football field at Denny Edinburgh, which is managed by youth organizations. And it's youth organizations, you know, that Jessica Jasper and I have, have been involved. And we're on the Booster Club for the high school football team too. So, you know, it's, a, a lot of it is community-funded. And it would be great if the city played a bigger role in both providing places for kids to play sports and the maintenance of them, because right now we're, we're relying a lot on donations.
So that's what I'm suggesting, is just opening up the dialogue. And I've said this to some of our developers, you can't always get what you want. But if we get something out of it that's better than what's there now, you know, talking is always a good thing to get certain issues on the table. And we're never going to get everything we want, but if we can get a couple of things that just make it easier for everybody, that, that's all I'm saying. But opening dialogue with the school district, since they do have the majority of the facilities, is a worthy phone call. And I'm more than happy to do it, anyway. Commissioner Freiberger?
Well, first, I really do like the redesign. Those two columns remind you of kind of like a textbook or something, the, the previous. And it actually, there was an issue in the land use element, but it sounds like that will be corrected where I was reading part of something and then it wound up in the second column and.
and then it wound up in the second column and it got all messed up. And I was going, what, what happened here? So that wouldn't be an issue. And I love the addition of graphics. One thing I wanted to mention, just because I was thinking about it, is that we use, you know, red for our markups and everything. But when we're thinking about a plan that people are going to, you know, the general community is going to be looking at, I don't know if there are any guidelines for, like, color impaired people? That's the only thing I was thinking of with the color coding of the chapters. And since it's not the only indicator, it may not be a big issue. Just thinking, you know, red, there's quite a few people who cannot see the color red as, you know, colorblind. So just thinking about that. So, but there's obviously other distinguishing features. That's just kind of an addition to that. And I, I think it's great to, to make it more user-friendly, so.
Commissioner Devine?
I agree to comment that not having two columns. I remember trying to read the one, I kept drawing back the point from column to column. I apologize. I read the document very quickly and I can't remember which one it was in. I think it was in the housing one. But it said that ninety-three percent of Cedar Valley residents identify with one race. That surprises me. I would think that number would be higher. Do I understand correctly that seven percent of residents identify with one race?
That is correct, as far as we understand from the census data. However, I'll note that ethnicity and race are considered separately. So Cedar Valley is actually like fourteen percent of households are headed by Hispanic or Latino. And that's of any race. So they consider race and ethnicity separately. So, yeah, the populations of, the raw number of populations of people who identify as races other than white is relatively small, although not that out of step with the rest of the county. But Cedar Valley actually has a higher percentage population that considers itself to be of Hispanic or Latino origin than the county as a whole, which was actually kind of surprising to me when I crunched the numbers. But, yeah, so there is, there is diversity. It's just more so in ethnicity than in race, if that makes sense.
I would just surprise it. It said that ninety-two percent identify more than, more than one race.
Oh, yes.
I would think that...
Fifty percent are white alone, and, yeah.
I would think that it'd be, more people would identify with one race.
Yeah, I mean, like, if you were, if you were, if you were, if you had one parent who was white and one parent who was Asian, you'd probably identify as two races. And so the way that, I mean, the way the Census Bureau does these statistics is a little bit wonky and in the weeds. I have, I have PDFs I could share with you if you, if you want to take a nap. But, so, so they ask people, you know, like, like, are you, do you identify as like a particular race alone or one race in combination with other races? And so these numbers, the numbers, when you look at them, like, you have to, you have to look at which subset of data you're looking at, because there's, there's race alone, which is useful for breaking out, like, as a percentage of the whole. Like, you know, so it's, you know, it's white alone, black alone, Asian alone, Pacific Islander alone. And then there's this other category that's, that's two or more races. And so then that kind of gets you to a hundred percent. So that's really why you do that. If you look at people who, you know, you know, people like Hispanic or Latino of any race includes many different races. So yet the totals aren't necessarily...
And you're getting that, he's getting off that, off the census data. So you're not just pulling that out.
Right.
And that's if people actually fill out the census.
Yeah. I'm a survey nerd. I love the American Community Survey, so I take it whenever, I love to take it whenever it gets sent to my house, but not everybody does.
I have a question. I wanted, Commissioner Saxon comments about the playfields? We discussed it last time and discussed, we're going to try to booster their, bolster the language in the parks and recreation and open space element for that. But I wanted to ask you, we can also add some policy language in the land use element on that. I found that, you know, the more, what happens with the comp plan, after it's all done and adopted, it goes, we go back to business and public works generally only looks at capital facilities and utilities and maybe transportation. Planning looks at housing and land use. And, you know, so all the different departments look at their part. And, and sometimes when you have, it's helpful to have similar or duplicative, you know, language in two different chapters if you want more attention paid to it. Just, just a thought. And we would be happy to add some language in the land use element on that in addition to the parks as far as play, playfields.
That would make me happy.
Okay, good.
But, but in this case, we're talking specifically, the Cedar Valley School District is a separate government amongst itself. Separate budget, separate everything. So they're funding everything in their budget. So what we're trying to do is open up a dialogue that there's some ability to share facilities that one, the high school is not utilizing certain things that club teams and things like that, maybe they get a shot at it, like I said.
Yeah, and, and that already exists. And so the, these youth organizations already have a very good relationship with the school district.
I would think so, yeah.
And so, and, and, and so I apologize if I'm not communicating that well. We, you know, the, the youth organizations do coordinate and work with. They have a facilities manager and, and that person is the point of contact for all these different youth organizations. And she's juggling and balancing all these different teams. It's, it's not, it's not a partnership that's the issue, that the partnership exists. It's the, it's, the lack of facilities is the issue. So, yeah, if, you know, the, the high school does take precedence, you know, on, at Janiki for the baseball fields and at the high school football field, you know. And so what's left for the youth organizations is kind of the leftovers whenever the high school isn't playing. But the city is growing, we've got a lot more kids. And Cedar Valley, when I moved here thirteen years ago, you know, the very first two or three people I met, this is if you really want to get engaged in this community, get your kids involved in sports, because this is a huge sports community. Thirteen years ago, it wasn't as big as a problem. You know, my older kids are now growing out of the house. My younger kids, it's a struggle. You know, we really struggle, you know, trying to find practice space. So it, it's not, it has nothing to do with the youth organizations coordinating with the high school. It's already being done. You know, what is the issue is there's not enough fields to put all these kids somewhere. And the only city baseball field we have is the one that's by Town Hall. So, or, or the ones at Riverfront Park. So, you know, maybe there can be a park, you know, that we convert into a multi-use field. That, that's all I'm trying to communicate is that we're just, we're really limited on where our kids can play sports.
Have we looked up the road to Lyman and Hamilton? I mean, their kids are in the same school district, I mean.
If I could add to that, I'm the treasurer of the high school baseball booster club. And Lyman has been using our high school fields at Janiki. I mean, the, the issue is, and I don't have direct knowledge of the agreement for that, but the issue is school district budgets are becoming extremely constrained. For example, baseball, the high school provides the jersey. The booster club raising money provides the pants, the belts, the hats, the socks, the, everything else. We want the kids to have great experiences in sports, even at the high school level. There's just not the funds available. And then we're trying to help other schools. So there was, I mean, baseball's closing out now. My son's a freshman, he was on C-team. There was at least one night where there's no field available for C-team because Lyman is on one field and a game's going on the other. And the fields don't have very good drainage, so a little bit of rain and they can't be used. And you have volunteers out there working on the fields because there's, I believe there's only one gentleman maintaining those high school fields. Getting back to talk about Danny Engberg, I was a volunteer that was going out and mowing it for two years with my kids. We would go out and mow it. And the city maintenance people, they mowed everything but that field. They said, because you guys are leasing it, we're not supposed to mow it. So Jessica Jasper was loading up her zero turn on a trailer, driving out there, mowing it with my kids every week, just so that the kids could have somewhere to play. And it was really rough. Thankfully, we've got someone who knows lawns better than me doing it now. And it's in such better shape. But it is tough, and that's a huge revenue stream. When you have games being, you know, the high school right now hosts youth football games on Saturdays, families are flocking to Cedar Valley for these games. And then they look for somewhere to eat afterwards. And they, oh, let's look, oh, look at this clothing store. Oh, let's go look here. They're spending money in our community. And it's wonderful. And like Saturdays when Cedar Valley hosts, you know, four games in a day, you just see wall-to-wall people. And they get to see our community at a different level than just driving through Highway twenty. But I agree with what both of you are saying. It's just, we're trying to make do with a tighter and tighter school district budget, I believe. And thank goodness for youth sports and volunteers and booster clubs to try to make up the difference for the kids.
I'm a fan, that's all I can say, yeah.
So something I was thinking of, I believe it was to your point, Donna, or that you brought up maybe putting something in the land use element. I was looking through the goals and policies, and there's really a number of locations you could put something in. Or if we take another look, or you take another look and they're become action items, this could be something in there. But just, just throwing one out there, goal LU-ten is to create a safe, active environment for youth. That could be a policy or an act, action under there, something to do with playfields. I, I don't know how that would be stated, but, yeah. And that's just one possibility in there, so.
Yeah, that's great. So we'll take a look at it if everybody's in agreement, it sounds like, for that.
Oh, and I did want to say, because I kind of forgot about this when I was talking earlier, I, I agree with the other commissioners that I like the idea of the, the action items just so long as it doesn't put us, as Commissioner Huggins said, so we do it carefully and don't put staff in a bind to where, because we already do have the six-year, you know, the TIP and the CIP and all of these things. And it's like, it's just one more thing that, you know. But it does provide better direction than, like Nicole was saying, just having to look through there. Because I was kind of wondering, how, how does anybody keep track of what, what we're supposed to do? Like, the first thing I noticed when we first started looking at this was, oh, we have a new library, so we can check that one off the list that was kind of originally in there of talking about, you know, providing library facilities and expanded functions, you know, for the county. Because we brought that in is now, you know, not just the city, it's, it's kind of the greater area, you know. And obviously, we want to keep adding to that. But, but that's kind of one that we did do, was build a new library. But there's so many others that, when you get more specific like that, how do you keep track?
There's other things, too. I mean, like I said, housing is obviously a big deal. But that goes hand in hand with the capital facilities aspect of it as well. I mean, we could say, oh, yeah, you can put all this great stuff in there. But we have the ability to provide the water, the sanitation, stormwater. There's a whole bunch of elements that make that stuff happen that are non-optional, is what it really comes down to. And we can zone things the way we want. But if you want a PRD and all of a sudden your six-inch water line is a half a mile away, well, that's great, well, it's zoned for a PRD. But it's going to cost you three hundred bucks a lineal foot to run that line up to it. So there's these constraining pieces that everything kind of has to come together at some point. Anyway, I don't have anything else. Anybody else for the good of the order here?
May I ask a question and forgive my ignorance? I enjoyed your presentation a few months ago regarding population and expectations for increase here in Cedar Valley. And I understand that those numbers decreased significantly over the last time. How often do those projections come out from the state?
Well, they come out, I think, they annually, don't they?
The population projections every five years. And they, they look out, these were, the current ones were adopted in...
Here, let you...
That's a good question. So the, the population projections that the state prepares for all the counties that then get adopted and, you know, divvied up among the cities for, for comp plans, they do those every five years. And they're kind of offset a little bit from the comp plan updates. So like, they had one in, the most recent one is twenty-twenty-two. So they, they projected out for all counties out to like twenty-fifty. Because they, you know, different counties, or different counties and their cities are on different timelines for, because they want, they want to give enough lead time so that if you're adopting in twenty-twenty-seven, that you've still got, you know, usable data. The, so then the next one will be coming out in twenty-twenty-seven. The state will be issuing a new set of projections. And, I mean, they kind of, they, they change every time because, you know, the, the inputs change. You know, the demographic, like births and deaths and stuff is, is relatively easy to model. But the really hard one is, is like domestic migration. Because people move from city to city, county to county all the time. And so that's really where a lot of the variation comes in. And it also accounts for your previous ten years of growth. So there's a bunch of different factors that go into it. But the reason why stuff, you know, might be higher or lower is, you know, in part due to migration trends and in part due to your kind of growth history in the prior ten years. So, and I think a lot of communities end up, you know, advocating to their county when it's time to do the growth, adopt growth targets, they'll say like, oh, you know, we advocate that, you know, usually they, there's like a high, medium and a low projection. And sometimes counties will say, hey, the high, the middle projections, you know, what most people use, but that doesn't work for us because there was some, you know, like, I'm working in a rural county where like they had a, just a huge spike in building permits and population growth in like the first two years of the pandemic. But then afterward, it kind of returned to like a very low growth scenario. And so that kind of, they're like, hey, we actually think something less than medium is appropriate. So, you know, counties and the cities get together and talk about this stuff and figure out what's appropriate for this go-around using the most recent numbers. But, yeah, I mean, in twenty-twenty-seven, they might issue new ones and it might, that target might be a little bit different, you know, because it's, there's inputs that go into it. And, and the methodology doesn't change. It's important, like, the state has like consistent methodology because they want to make sure that like, if you're looking at two population projections, even if the numbers are different, the methodology has to kind of be the same. Because, and only the, the inputs change, right? So that you can actually compare one thing to another. That's kind of the, the thirty-thousand-foot OFM population projection overview.
And that helps me significantly, and I appreciate you taking the extra time to explain it. Because the way that this element is written, it's talking about having housing available for when the people get here. But on a ground-level perspective, you've got Burlington's closing a school. You've got Cedar Valley School District has already said that they got less students this year than they expected. And when the question came up, oh, are they being pulled for homeschooling? The superintendent said, no, they're moving because it's so expensive to live in Skagit County. And now a lot of the hubbub with property taxes and other taxes. And neighbors of mine are having honest discussions about whether they should live here or whether it's more cost-effective to live in other places. I was just curious how flexible that remains because we're trying to have housing available. But how soon do we get numbers that possibly are greater, significantly greater due to industry and new jobs here, or significantly less due to migration, like you just talked about? So you answered my question, thank you.
You're welcome. That's a great question. And I will also add that, that, you know, in addition to the new projections that'll come out in two years, all the cities and counties that fully plan under the GMA have to do like, they call it an implementation progress report, which is a super, you know, fun name for, we just call it like the five-year check-in. And that's five years after your plan adoption. You kind of look at, you know, has growth been going in a way that you anticipated? If you made some code changes, are those doing what you want? And also, if there's new population projections, like, is there reason to think that, whether because of, you know, change, you know, huge changes in like local industry or some of these other things? Or, on the other hand, changes in the capital facilities financing point, you know, where it's like, oh, is, is something going to be not available that we thought was going to be available? And that's going to like constrain our supply of developable land? So you'll have an opportunity to take a look at that kind of stuff, using that as one of the inputs. So, yeah, you don't, you don't get to like adjust your population projection mid-stream, but you can, in the progress report, say like, hey, things aren't happening the way we expected, and here's why. And so then maybe you look at doing some other stuff, you know, like a minor update to your, something in your plan to like, you know, change development regulations in a different way if stuff's not working the way you want it. So, again, not everything's within your control, obviously, but there is an opportunity, so.
So just to add into that, we originally backed... So just to add into that, we originally, back in 2016, thought that number was going to be mid 20,000 plus. So when I heard it got brought down to 17,000, we did our last comp plan update. Hence, we put tools in place, PRD, UVMU, a whole bunch of things. And a lot of our mixed commercial is totally underutilized. You have all these single-family homes, that at some point, they're beyond their economic value now. They're going to be coming on down, and you're probably going to see a mixed-use component to that as well. So we're just tweaking things right now. We got a lot of really good things, a lot of great tools that are already in place, that outside of that transitional comp, between the industrial as well as the housing, that's something I definitely think we should take a look at as well. But we're in really good shape when it comes to housing. And I think we're fine on our capital facilities. But I'd rather have somebody else opine on that, and let us know that, that we do have the ability to handle all that stuff. But, yeah, we're, we're in a good place, because we were anticipating a much greater number than that.
Thank you.
So with that, Ashton, how are you feeling? Just give us an update on your.
Doing pretty good. I started standing last week.
Oh, right on.
Moving on to walking maybe next week or two. So, we'll see.
The things we take for granted that could get changed in an instant, yeah.
No, it's crazy. Looking back at my emails from that Friday before, it's like, I just dropped out of the blue with all these conversations that I had.
Well, I'm glad you're feeling better. Does anybody have anything else before I move for an adjournment?
Just a second. So.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Next meeting is, next meeting is May 20th. That's our regularly scheduled meeting. And then the one after that will be May 27th. That's a week later.
The 20th, what's on the 27th, just out of curiosity?
6:30. All these will be at 6:30. And then the one after that will be June 17th. And we're shooting to have a draft document to you on July 1st. But some of these dates might change, because we can only take an estimate of what will be, what will be ready, when it's going to be ready, right? So, but May 20th and May 27th are probably, for sure.
At 6:30.
At 6:30.
I'm sorry? July 1st. June 17th will be our meeting.
So no special meetings currently proposed in June?
Right.
Okay.
Yet.
I just have the 17th.
And so the way we do this is we set the deadline for Thursdays. And then Fridays, we assemble the packet and get it to you. That way, you've got all weekend to read through it. So you'll see one coming out for, uh, two weeks, right? May 20th, you'll see that one coming out on the 16th. You'll.
You got that, Nicole?
For that weekend. Yeah. So.
I will miss that meeting. I will be in Arizona for my daughter's college graduation.
Okay.
But I will be back, and I've got the 27th on my calendar.
Perfect.
You will be here in spirit. It's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'd like to have someone make a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Jasper. Second?
I can keep talking if.
Commissioner Devine makes a second. Is there any further?
From the web.
Go, go ahead. Commissioner Saxon, was you're the second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? With that, no. Meeting is adjourned at 8:02 PM. Thank you, everyone.